continually is heating up. And lastly, instead of focusing just on the number of trees, I believe this council is focusing on what sort of canopy do we have in the city? And we've set ourselves the goal of having 25% of the entire city have a tree canopy in that topography within the next five to 10 years. We're going to find out exactly what is a realistic goal, but I think a decade from now, a quarter of our city will have trees covering it.
You talked about the cooling of the air and the cleaning of the air, but you also briefly mentioned water. And of course, we've been in a prolonged drought and who knows how much longer that's going to go. I know that you have a personal interest in the part that trees play in the water cycle here in Southern California.
Absolutely. Remember, there was a gentleman who sat in a big, huge oak tree a little bit north of our city in Santa Clarita area, oak tree, and did not want it to be taken down and eventually was able to keep that tree alive. And many people asked, you know, it's just one tree. Millions of people are going to use the road that would go through. But what people didn't realize, and what people, I think, after the fact learned, including myself, was that when it rains, a beautiful old oak like that retains some 30,000 to 40,000 gallons of water, water that otherwise would hit some sort of drain, go straight out to the L.A. River and out to the ocean. You know, it used to be said that when this state was built and this city was built, that every bit of precipitation, snow or water that would land outside of L.A., was engineered to travel to Los Angeles as quickly as possible through the marvelous aqueducts and other systems we have to sustain life here. But within Los Angeles, we have engineered all the rain that falls here to as quickly as possible leave Los Angeles, essentially to wash away from our city instead of infiltrating to sustain life and to give us a drinking water supply. That is finally changing as we have projects like the Million Trees Initiative and as we're tearing up some of the concrete and asphalt to allow water to percolate naturally into our aquifers.
I want to get back into more of that subject in just a moment, but talking about some of the water that is just rolling through Los Angeles on its way ultimately to the ocean, this term TMDLs keeps coming up. What are they? Where do they come from? Why do they require our attention? In fact, I think it's a matter of federal law now.
That's right. TMDL is just a fancy acronym for Total Maximum Daily Load, which means the pollutants that we have in our bodies of water. There are over 60 of these pollutants that we are required to take out of different bodies of water in the Los Angeles area, from trash in the L.A. River to bacteria in Santa Monica Bay, from nitrogen in Echo Park Lake. All of these pollutants, whether they be heavy metals or the trash that we throw on the street or oil that gets washed right into our river, we have to do a better job of making sure that we change our personal behavior first. But then, secondly, the city is spending considerable amount of money through the successful passage of Proposition O, which I put on the ballot with Councilwoman Jan Perry a few years ago, and 76% of our voters passed, which allows us to bring in real big sources of money to be able to clean up the river, to clean up our lakes and the ocean. And the impressive thing is we are the only large city in America that is right now in compliance with those federal Clean Water Act requirements on each of those bodies of water to bring it back to a swimmable, drinkable, fishable standard, depending on which body of water. And that's something that all Angelinos should be proud of.
But don't those standards get even stricter and more difficult to meet as the years go forward? Aren't there, isn't there a timetable involved here as well?
Absolutely. While we've met the timetable so far, Proposition O, which was half a billion dollars, we've already pledged to projects that'll just take us through the first four or five years. We need to find new sources of money to be able to clean that water further. We're hoping that the state may change the state constitution to allow a 50% vote of the people that would then allow us to take the stormwater fee and directly pay for these improvements. For many years, we fought lawsuits from environmental advocates who wanted to see clean water, and we complained that it was too expensive. But I think Proposition O showed how badly Angelinos want clean water, are willing to pay a fair amount for that. And I think the day that we can see, as we're seeing in the Los Angeles River, fish returning or people being able to swim in a lake or the ocean, that is a day that we will all celebrate our victory of clean water.
I want to give you another moment to talk about that because there's 51 miles of the Los Angeles River at play here. How will the river change and in turn presumably improve our environment and the quality of life here in Los Angeles?
Well, I live right by the Los Angeles River and I grew up walking alongside its banks. Many people don't think we even have a river because it looks essentially like the big flood channel that it has been re-engineered to be. But recently, you know, I think things are really turning a corner. I serve on our ad hoc river committee with Ed Reyes. I'm the vice chair and he's our chair. And I think our concentration on the L.A. River is finally yielding results. Just two weeks ago, I was down in Alesian Valley, which is in my district, and I looked up, I was there with a ranger from the Santa Monica Mountains Authority, and we saw a beautiful osprey, a fish eagle, come and land on a post. And he said, you know what? When an osprey is by the Los Angeles River, that means that there's fish in the river. And when there's fish in the river, that means that the water is getting healthy again. And I think that was a wonderful story and a wonderful metaphor for what we need to do along the entire river. 51 miles of a river that gave us our name after all, were named after the Rio de los Angeles, the River of Los Angeles, is something that we all need to be concentrated on. We did a great job of engineering a way to avoid the floods. Now it's time to re-bring back the life that defines the Los Angeles River, and recent studies show fish are jumping back in the L.A. River.
Finally, during the meeting, you said over the next several months, council is going to be focusing on other topics in the same way. Could you quickly give us a preview and what specific topics have been chosen besides the environment?
We're going to tackle one of the five topics each month, topics that Angelinos are most concerned about. We've done the environment. Public safety will be our next. Probably transportation will be the third. Our infrastructure, our aging infrastructure, will be fourth. And then finally, we'll look at housing and homelessness. We think those five topics, by setting goals, not just having a conversation, but holding ourselves accountable to those goals, will be a great way for us to have a proactive agenda to improve life for all Angelinos.
Well, we look forward to seeing and hearing all about it. District 13 council member and council president Eric Carsetti, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you, Jack. Great pleasure.
All the motions, suggestions, and questions, and again, there were over 80, will now go to the chief legislative analyst, the CLA, to be researched, formatted, and brought back to council for final approval. L.A. City View is the government access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35 or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the weekend, October 12, 2007. On behalf of Lee Smith and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
The city of Los Angeles. When duty calls, the LAPD responds.
I want emergency.
How old is your daughter?
She's four years old. Her name's Danell.
I lost my puppy. Can you help me?
We have a critical missing. There is an Amber Alert, so let's look for any information you get. Pass that into the watch commander. Let's be careful out there.
To fight crime and to keep our streets safe.
I think I'm going nuts if this is my daughter.
Push units at 7855, 7855. Two of them security, one of them in heart, one of them in child market. Suspect family, 958, west side, five hours, going towards one big truck. Take this currency.
7855, Roger.
All units, call 411 to Catalina, suspect.
Standing with our community.
Los Angeles Police Department this morning issued an Amber Alert. A suspect is driving a black Honda Civic.
Working as a team.
Hey, what's up?
I think I saw that car that you were looking for.
Can you show us?
Yeah.
Let's go.
They take pride in what they do.
8910, code six, under.
And when duty calls, the LAPD responds.
It's a positive on the vehicle.
Roger. Five seconds to yield positive on the Amber Alert vehicle.
It looks like they found the car.
The LAPD is hiring. Become a part of the team. Visit us at joinlapd.com.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is Wednesday, October 17, 2007. The city council meets Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. If you are unable to be here, you may access this meeting via our webcast, as well as at 7:30 each night. It is replayed, and on the weekends, all council members are replayed, council meetings are replayed on Sunday. We are waiting for a quorum. Thank you to Mr. Alacone, Mr. Labange, and Mr. Parks. Would ask that Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Smith, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Weston, and Mr. Zine, please make their way down to the city council chambers. It is now 10:10. We will have our final quorum call at 10:20. Thank you. Thank you, council members Alacone, Cardenas, Labange, Parks, Smith, and Weston. We are still waiting for council members Hahn, Reyes, Rosendahl, Weiss, and Zine for a quorum. It is now about 10:17. We are going to have another quorum call at 10:20 and make a decision whether or not we adjourn. Again, I would ask Ms. Hahn, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, and Mr. Weiss to make their way down to the city council chambers so we do not have to adjourn for lack of quorum. so we do not have to adjourn for lack of quorum. Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Again, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Rosendahl, please make your way down to the City Council chambers. Thank you. Mr. Reyes is here. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alacone, Cardenas, Hahn, Weisar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present in a quorum. Madam President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Yes. Mr. Weiss moves. Mr. Reyes seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
Madam President, do we should take a public comment at this time?
I'd like to actually go through the agenda.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Madam President, there is a request to continue item number 15 for one week, and that would be October 24th.
Unless there is any disagreement, that will be continued for one week.
And I believe also on item number 42, that will be continued to Friday.
That will be continued till Friday.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearings, items 1 through 6, the recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearing in consideration of the ordinance to October 31st.
That will be the order.
Items 7 through 32 are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 7, 8, and 9 are commissioners. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
We will hold those three on the desk.
And that would leave before council items 10 through 32. And on item number 13, the committee report has been distributed to the committee members.
Thank you. Colleagues, any specials? Number 16 by Mr. Parks. Any other specials, colleagues? Mr. Reyes?
Yes, can you please hold item 13 on the desk?
We will hold item 13.
Thank you.
Any other specials, colleagues? 14 and 24. For Mr. Alacone. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next items?
And Madam President, the ordinance will go over for one week.
Thank you. Next item?
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 33 through 41, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Thank you. And I know we have cards on 34, 37, 38, 39, and it looks like 40 and 41. Any other specials, colleagues?
33.
33 by Mr. Parks. Any other specials? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Next items.
That would take council back to the items called special. Do we should take up public comment first?
We will do public comment. We could ask Sky Anderson, followed by James Ota, followed by Michael John Parker.
I'm Sky Anderson, the resident of Los Angeles for eight years. I appeared here last Wednesday, and I was quite critical of Mr. Garcetti. He asked me at the end of my talk if I would call his staff and try to help them develop programs to help the homeless. I called his staff. His staff was belligerent. They wouldn't cooperate in almost any way. But I know Mr. Garcetti cares about the homeless. I'm a solid guy. I've done his charge. He's a very sensitive man. These people hurt, and he hurts with them. Problem we have is denial. We have a country that's in the grips of a contagious disease called drug addiction, alcoholism, substance abuse, and people don't want to look at it. 50 years ago, when I was in the Army, we didn't have these problems except in neighborhoods like Harlem, and that were now everywhere. We're now about Latino gangs trying to kill black people, all around drugs. There are people with AIDS. They get high on methamphetamine, and they have weak, unstable sex, and they get AIDS because of the methamphetamine. We have homeless over LA dying from substance abuse. So my quest here is to tell you that we need to break through the denial. This country's gone through various crises. Like, we were in crisis in 1929 when the stock market crashed, and we elected who? We elected a man who was a cripple. He knew what pain was. He knew what suffering was, and he brought us out of the Depression. We had a crisis of the Civil War, and we had a president who was very sympathetic and very understanding, Abraham Lincoln. He saved this nation. I'm telling the City Council, if you really want to do your job, you'll help the public break through the denial they're in, and tell the public that we got a crisis destroying Los Angeles, destroying the state of California, destroying the United States of America, and it's not going to stop. It's going to get worse and worse and worse. And we will look at what's going on. Thank you. And do some action.
James Ota?
Morning, President, members of the council. My name's James Ota, and James Ota Trucking. The Ports of Los Angeles Law and Beach Clean Air Act Plan wants the ports' trucking companies and independent truck drivers to replace the 1989 and older truck models with newer trucks which meet the Port Clean Air Act plan. The 2002 trucks are newer retrofits to meet the Ports Clean Air Act plan also. This, I believe, the 1,400 trucking companies and 16,000 independent truck drivers will agree to do their share to help clean up the air pollution created partly by the diesel trucks we use at both ports. The concession portion of CAP is totally not agreeable to the Ports Trucking Company and independent truck drivers. Concession is only a means for the union to come in and replace the independent drivers and eliminate the majority of the truck companies. Let us focus on the proposal to clean the clean air, but not use concession as a way to accomplish the Ports' plan to help clean the clean air. The health and other benefits independent truck drivers' companies can give them a list of where to apply, and if they were to join like CTA and credit unions, which have group insurance and other benefits, they can apply. Everyone has a choice. We can only give them information to apply. The dirty air is pointed at the trucks that are at the ports, and where there is an increase in air pollution is at the time the trucks are idling in waiting lines. Let us get the ports to make these lines become something of a pass. Increase time the ports are open, 24/7. Better and louder signals heard at the speakers when the drivers scan their gate pass in all the speaker booths that they have to go to. Have enough employees to work through the break times so that there are no long lines waiting for the longshoremen, maintenance shops, tire shop, road ability lines, and office clerks to return from the breaks. But help clean the air, and then we will eliminate it from truck financing for the newer models and home security.
If I could just ask you to conclude. That buzzer was that your two minutes had been expired. So if you could just say your last statement, then we'll move to the next speaker.
Okay. We should not allow the concession to have the unions come in, because if you do that, you eliminate the truck drivers, and they become union. Then you have three union contracts there in the ports. The longshoremen have concessions, a clause, that they have a sympathy. They can stop the ports.
Thank you very much. And I know, maybe even, if you can share maybe your comments with Ms. Hahn's office.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Michael John Parker? And then we'll be going out to the San Fernando Valley after this.
Yes, good morning, trusted City Council members of Los Angeles. My name is Mike Parker. I'm a proud high school counselor over at Belmont High School. I had hoped to speak to more of a full audience, or maybe more of attentive audience here, since this does affect things more, I guess, more targeted around certain areas of our city. I am here to speak about the issue of continued increased on the daily basis of illegal food vending in and around our residential areas, as well as school areas. We've now had, you know, in the past, in the recent past, we've lost a child's life over this. And as I work with inner-city gang youth at Belmont and in the surrounding communities, my people brag to me about picking up rent and taxing rent on illegal vending. It's now come to a death over this, which stems from illegal vending. In the area where I live, in the exposition park area, it is causing a racial divide among people. They're getting very upset, and as we see by LAPD and the other, I guess, notable forces to combat this, no one wants to deal with it. They're passing the buck over and over, and it's becoming a heated issue. If I can, if I myself can shut down an illegal taco stand or something that's on my corner, you know, seven nights a week in a suit with a school radio going and asking some questions, I find it hard to believe that black-and-white squad cars with two sworn officers cannot stop by and make a call to close things down. I understand it's a heated issue. It's a sensitive issue. But we've got everyone selling everything all around 24/7. I have a couple of, in fact, former students who are out there selling. I've spoken with them, because I'm in touch with them, trying to get them back in school. Oh, well, they say nothing to us. Nobody says anything when I tell them about that. I also teach night school, English second language, and I teach on Saturdays as well. We're trying to empower people, and this is not helping them. I cannot hear anymore. I have all my children. This is all I can do. We have resources, and we need to encourage people in the proper direction. Please help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Miriam Fogler, and the San Fernando Valley?
Yesterday, I was supposed to speak on 27, but President Garcetti, after giving the horseshoe right to speak for two minutes, I want the, I request an additional two minutes to be put on my public comment or another part of the agenda here. On 27, I didn't get it right to be heard. You people did, around the horseshoe. And this is against the property owners and renters of the city of LA. And you don't have a right to do this. If you don't let me have the two minutes here, I'm going to speak on the, and this is not right, which violated the Brown Act. You violated my First Amendment, which is a freedom of speech. And I'm going to tell you, it's not right of you to impose this tax on people so that certain people have to pay for gangs in this city. You need to make it for everyone or no one at all. If you want to ask people for money, don't ask for donors to help the gangs. This is not the way to go. Number 27 is a no-no winner. It's a loser, Janice. I know you're a delight, and I'm really shocked that you want to impose this parcel tax on property owners. This is a bad, bad, bad idea. There's going to be better ways. You can have fundraisers to raise money for the gangs. I'm sure you'll get raised money. Number two is this phone thing. You want to expand it so you can raise more money than 279 just from this. What you should be doing is getting the controller from the county and showing how much property taxes you have gotten here for the city this fiscal year, starting 2006 to 2007, 2008, and show how much property taxes you have left. And I, believe me, and show me where the CRA has how much of the property taxes they have. It'll balance out. So this is not the right thing to do. And don't blame on the city workers. They're getting below money, $130, and I'm only getting about $60,000 a year. How can you pay and have $150 more when, you know, other people are making a lot more money, like you guys, making $17,000 a year, month?
Thank you very much, Ms. Fogler. Appreciate you being out there in San Fernando Valley today. Matt Dowd, followed by Arnold Sacks, followed by Nancy Wyatt.
Yeah, thank you very much, LA City View, Channel 35, Matt Dowd. Got to thank Jack Popejoy, actually, for inviting me down here very first on Channel 35 to come out my public comment. So I'm taking full advantage of that today, and I'll start off by giving Channel 35 an acknowledgement. Now, back to the business. City attorneys, bringing out a new beach ordinance that's going to segregate artists. Now, I just want you to just go look up on the internet right now, White versus the City of Sparks. S-P-A-R-K-S. White versus the City of Sparks. It's a Ninth Circuit judgment. It's just come down, and it came down against a permit and for an artist. And I'm going to be extensively quoting that judgment in the near future if this new ordinance comes through. So, you know, I'm serious. You're looking at hundreds of permits, lifetime permits. I've got a permit. The city of Los Angeles gave me a permit for my inextricably intertwined expression. It was in the contract. Carol Sobel sued the city on inextricably intertwined, God knows why, and the city attorney, Rocky Delgado, said, "Oh, her lawsuit's got merit." So you guys suspended that ordinance and brought in something from Santa Monica. And so we said, "No, wait a minute. Inextricably intertwined is the good one. Santa Monica's got the bad one." So we sued, because nobody would listen. And now the judge said, "Make a new one." So that says the current one's no good. So why aren't you voluntarily suspending that and putting Michael Hunt back out on the beach to work? 567 days.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sacks?
Good morning, council members. Thank you very much, Arnold Sacks. I did want to talk about yesterday's item on the agenda, the phone tax. Your, some of the things that I had second thoughts about. You're asking for a 9% tax. The 10% tax right now raises $270 million, according to what's written and what's been discussed. So I guess the 9% tax would leave you with a deficit of $27 million. Then, we also heard that a gang tax wants to be initiated that would raise $40 million. Well, $40 million would leave you with an excess of $13 million. The new technology being taxed, will that generate $27 million, according to what the mayor's proposing? And finally, and also, well, not finally, but the exemptions that were discussed yesterday so passionately. Glad to hear that it was being included, or something was going to be done. But we have an emergency that we need to hear about yesterday, and the exemptions won't be discussed until the year 2009. What happened to 2008? What happened to the rest of the year here? Again, another chance for the City Council to lead the charge by stepping back. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Nancy Wyatt?
Thank you. And I want to express appreciation to all the council members who are sitting in their seats and willing to listen to those of us that have urgent messages for you. I am Nancy Wyatt. I'm Land Use Chair for Historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council, and I want all of the council members to be aware of the fact that there are above-ground facilities that are coming in and being installed in the public right-of-way between the curb and the street. They are unsightly. They are attracting graffiti. They have a right to be there, and they are very unattractive in our neighborhoods. I don't know how many of you have heard of them. They're commonly known as AGFs. They are four feet high by four feet by almost four feet. And they attract the graffiti. We're seeing them coming into Highland Park right and left. The applications are crossing my desk, and I am so surprised at how many are coming in. They are used for fiber optic cable usage with wireless transmissions. I have found that the city of Pasadena is installing them below ground. I wish that the city of Los Angeles would take as much interest in protecting our communities from these unattractive nuisances. Please, please, work with the Department of City Planning or whatever department it is that is allowing these to come in without any public hearing, because they have a right to use the public right-of-way. And whatever you can do, if you can pass an ordinance to require a mapping, which would create an accountability for these boxes that are, as I say, attracting graffiti, we have to do something. If there's a way of mapping them, and if there's a phone number put on these boxes, then we can notify them when there's graffiti all over them. My time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Labange?
Point of information. Can I ask a legislative analyst to discuss this issue? She mentioned that the city of Pasadena requires them to go underground. If Pasadena could do it, by golly, we should do it. The legislative analyst could meet with this citizen, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Madam Clerk, if we could please reconsider item number 20 for Mr. Rosendahl. Open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Mr. Rosendahl, item number 20.
Thank you very much. I'd like to reconsider it for a quick comment.
We just did. So if your...
Good. Please. Could we have you come forward, DOT? Could we, could we have you come forward, DOT? Real quickly. Where's Ken? Okay? Harpaul? Colleagues, we passed this on consent, and hopefully we will reconsent it, but this is a project that for five years various forces have been working on. The Sepulveda Pass, you know, other than the 405 and the Sepulveda Boulevard, is the way you get through it. And a lot of people know that Sepulveda Boulevard is the way to go when the 405 and the 101 are so congested, the most congested spot in America. And so, over the years, there's been talk about how do we make Sepulveda work more efficiently? And one that is obviously a no-brainer to me is that tunnel, that in the morning, coming in to the south side of the city, it needs to be two lanes. And then going to the north side of the city in the afternoon, we call it the valley, I call it the north side of the city, okay? We need two lanes going out so that we can move the traffic efficiently. Gentlemen, quickly tell us where we are and what we're voting on.
Okay, just really briefly, this is $11.307 million project that was funded through the 1999 MTA Call for Projects. And this project is going to implement several improvements along the corridor, and specifically those improvements are on Sepulveda Boulevard, northbound and southbound right turn pockets over at Wilshire Boulevard, which is one of the most congested intersections in this entire city. We're restriping the northbound lane to provide longer northbound left turn pocket storage over at Maraga so that people can get out of the way on Sepulveda Boulevard and get onto the freeway on-ramp. Also, we're creating a third southbound lane over at the Getty Center on-ramp, and we're also creating northbound and southbound bicycle facilities between Bel Air, Crest Road, and Skirball Center Drive. And as well as Skirball Center Drive, which is one of the most complex signal timing intersections in the city, we're doing a northbound right turn pocket. We're also doing a southbound lane to help get the people through that intersection much quicker. And we're also creating, as Mr. Rosendahl, Councilmember Rosendahl, had mentioned, a reversible lane through the tunnel. Currently, the tunnel is three lanes. It's a known bottleneck. It's one of the high priorities for the city to get replaced. But in the meantime, this is the most cost-effective measure we can do to increase the capacity through that tunnel. And that combined will probably, we're estimating an improved benefit for the commuters of roughly about 15%. So this $11.307 million for 30,000 vehicles going through that corridor will provide a tremendous amount of benefit. So we're excited about the project, can't wait to get it done. It's looking to start construction in June 2008, be completed in one year, that's June 2009, and be done before Caltrans even starts any work along the 405 freeway.
Fabulous. Harpaul, you want to add anything?
This was originally a reversible lane all the way from Malaland to Wilshire. Very cost-effective way to increase capacity in this congested corridor, and we're getting a lot more for the money in this improvement, and this will go a long way to help us move traffic in this process. And it will be a good supplement to what Caltrans plan to do on the 405 freeway, the carpool lane.
And I want to thank Transportation, Wendy Grule, Chair of that. We did a joint hearing of Public Works in Transportation to expedite this. You guys have done a fabulous job. The $11 million will be spent quickly, and we'll be able, in a little over a year, to have real relief on Sepulveda. Thank you very much, colleagues. I look for your positive vote on this. Thank you, madam.
Thank you. Mr. Parks? Nope? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Of course, we all 100% support this inability to, I know a lot of work was done on this. Mr. LeBange.
To see you back at the center table. This is a good project. You support this?
This is a wonderful project. I wish we could have more projects like that citywide.
Good. And we make sure we cover the issue of the bicycle.
Yes, it will have bicycle lanes.
I got to ask Mr. Rosendahl, Councilman of the District, correct?
Well, it's Mr. Weiss on one side, Mr. Rosendahl on the other, but we both are impacted. This is physically in my district where, where the tunnel is.
One famous movie scene was shot in that tunnel.
Lots of them.
Well, a very, very, very good friend of yours shot a famous scene in that.
Warren Beatty?
Yeah.
Warren Beatty?
Heaven can't wait. He was riding a bicycle through there.
Oh, great.
And that's where the accident happened, and then there, you know, Mr. Fella came down from heaven and said, it's your time. And he then led the ramps to the Super Bowl. Great movie, rented.
Well, we're very glad that Warren Beatty is still with us in the.
All the way, all the way. Safety first for cycling. Thank you, DOT, for resolving this, and I think in the long-range look, Mr. Rosendahl, the corridor of Sepulveda Pass, whether one day high-speed rail comes down the center of the freeway or not, we got to start talking about it, because one day, that's, there's only, I think, seven entrances to the San Fernando Valley. That's one.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Zine?
I've got one question regarding that reverse lane. Is this the same area they had a reverse lane in the past on Sepulveda near the tunnel?
Yes.
And what happened last time with that particular project? I think Marvin Browdy was the council member, the district at the time, and they had a reverse lane. How does this differ from that, and how is this going to be more effective than the past experience?
The reversible lane in the past was operated through manual cone operation, and it was, it was, I believe, a couple decades ago, if I recall, maybe a little bit longer. The problem with the old operations, when it's a manual cone operation, people would, cars would hit the cones, knock them over into the adjacent lanes, and then somebody would eventually have to go out there and replace those cones. So it's a little bit of a safety hazard for the people having to maintain the reversible lane, as well as motorists going through there with a cone potentially in their lane. So what we're doing with this reversible lane is we're actually automating it. We're having it tied into our ATSEC system. It's going to have overhead signs that are going to be LEDs, and depending on the time of day, we'll say to the motorists whether they can be in that lane or not be in that lane.
Is that like Fourth Street?
Yes.
Same thing?
Yes, very much like Fourth Street, except we're going to make this one look even better. It's going to be, we're going to take it even a step further and try to implement illuminated pavement markers. So that's going to be lights embedded in the roadway to help the motorists, you know, tell them which lane they're going to be in. So we're taking a step above and beyond anything that's been done.
So the project last time failed because of the manual operation with the cones?
Yeah, the cones would get knocked over.
But I thought the project was a good idea.
Yes, it was.
And it failed for whatever reason. I didn't know the reason why it failed, but obviously the cone situation was the problem.
This corridor is one of the most directional corridors that we have in the city. I think at one point, it's up to nine times the traffic in one direction than the other direction. It's perfect for reversible lane operation.
So the technology is enhanced, that we can now come up with something better to accommodate that traffic flow north and south on the corridor?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thanks, Phil. Okay.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll. Yes, Mr. Weiss?
I wanted to speak, but I was, my access was impeded. Thank you, Madam President. And I'm very proud of this, colleagues. This, this tunnel is 75% in District 5, and I have been working for a number of years with all of the affected community groups up and down the Sepulveda Pass to accomplish this, because right now, when you are leaving the city, heading towards the valley at rush hour, for reasons that make absolutely no sense, you are required to merge from two lanes into one as you go north. It is a bottleneck without any purpose, and turning it into a reversible lane is going to provide a great improvement for drivers heading to the valley every evening from Los Angeles. Sepulveda is two lanes going north, south of the tunnel, and two lanes going north, north of the tunnel. Tunnel should have been wider. I'd love to see it widened one day. In the meantime, we can maximize the space that we have in that tunnel by reversing that middle lane during the rush hour. I really want to thank the folks in DOT who've worked so closely with my office over the past, I think, four years. How long would you, Harpaul, how long would you estimate?
Almost five years now.
Okay. Five? Because I was just asked how long have you worked on this, and I, I didn't want to say five, because that sounds ridiculous.
Is it something?
It takes us five years to add a lane in Los Angeles. You know, it, it makes you shudder. But thank God it's happening, and I really appreciate the great work that you've done on this, both of you personally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Next items, I know, are commissioners.
Yes, Madam President. Items seven and eight are confirmations to the Rent Adjustment Commission, Maria Townsend and Mark Vargas. And communication from the chair has been submitted.
Great. Would you like to join us at the center table, both of you? And I'll acknowledge Mr. Westen, the Chair of our Housing Community Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Madam President, and members. I just want to ask a quick question, if I may. Item nine is also a commission appointment that we dealt with in committee today. Is it possible to have Rafi, I think, I thought I saw him in the back, to have him?
Sure. Rafi, please join us.
And we'd handle all of these in one, one moment. Anyway, I'm proud to rise, to recommend to the rest of my colleagues and dear friends that we confirm these, these appointments. These three individuals are, are very impressive. In fact, Mr. LeBange? Mr. LeBange? Mr. LeBange? Mr. LeBange? These three individuals are very impressive, and I think you in particular will, will relate to them the most. Now Rafi, the man that's closest to you, was a coach, so he is our kind of guy. He's a coach from North Ridge area. Young Mark, who's closer to me, is born and bred in L.A. He went to high school in L.A. County. He said he didn't go to Marshall, but he would drive past Marshall. So kind of, sort of, he has a relationship with Marshall, so I just wanted you to know that. And Maria's dad was from Mexico, a good ball player, and was recruited to play baseball in the United States in the Texas area, and I think he blew out a knee or something, but that's how their family came here. But I just wanted to say where it relates to, to Mark Vargas. Mark Vargas is a young man that has government experience. He worked five years for Governor Gray Davis, and when I was in Sacramento, I had an opportunity to program with him on a few occasions. Maria is excited about this opportunity to serve, and she already understands that the key to her being a successful commissioner is to have balance and fairness. And like I said, Rafi has been here for most of his adult life. I think he's at 30-plus years, and he's a father and a coach and a community person, and these three individuals are willing to sacrifice their time to serve on these two different commissions. So, dear colleagues, I ask that we have a unanimous vote and confirm the three individuals that I had the pleasure to ask questions of this morning. Plus, Maria gave me a sweet thank you note immediately, so she's, I want your support, LeBange. It's critical.
I call for a unanimous support of Mr. Westen's request.
Mr. Alarcon is our next speaker, and then Mr. Smith.
Well, I'm happy to provide my support for all three of these candidates, but I want to feature Maria Townsend, because we went to high school at the same time, at Poly High School in Sun Valley, and I always like to feature Poly graduates like Frank Martinez and others. We all went to school at the same time. I don't know what happened with that class, but we had a particular sense of social justice. What I can tell you about Maria, who is a community relations person for the Providence Holy Cross system, which is interesting, because obviously, we are, we are in dispute about, about how to achieve the expansion at Holy Cross. I want an EIR, and they don't want an EIR. But we all support the expansion, of course. The point I'm trying to make is that Maria Townsend is one of the nicest community relations people you will ever meet in your life, and I've known her in, in many different capacities. And I can tell you that she really is somebody who cares about the community, who, who cares about social injustice and tries to deal with it through her work at Providence Holy Cross. We can't agree on, on the issue of the EIR. I just want to see that environmental impact report. But I can tell you that if I, if I ever have to work against somebody, I would never want to work against somebody more than I would want to work with Maria, because she does it always with respect, with dignity, and she represents her organization. At the same time, she doesn't disrespect you when you disagree on a particular issue. But more than that, I think she's going to be a tremendous addition to the Rent Adjustment Commission, as, as the other two candidates' nominees will be. And clearly, it is something that we need to keep a focus on. I just wanted to give a shout out to my friend Maria Townsend, because she's a great person.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I want to concur with my colleagues and Mr. Westen's estimation of these three candidates. I had a pleasure meeting with Maria just yesterday, and she's really, somebody who wants to do this, really excited about doing it. And Mr. Alarcon, she gave me, got a lot of good stories about you, which I took copious notes about. So, thank you very much. Anyway, I want to congratulate all of you on your willingness to serve the people of L.A. I've told all the commissioners, these are not easy assignments. They're going to require a lot of your time and energy, but I think we have that in all of you. So congratulations, and I'm very happy to support all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And if nobody else wishes to be heard, let's go ahead and open the roll on the nominations, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations, commissioners. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Next item, please. Round of applause for our new commissioners. Next item, please.
Mr. President, council adopted ordinances earlier, 10, 11, and 12, and inasmuch as there are 13 council members present now, do you wish to reconsider those so they can be adopted on first reading?
Yes, please. And let's reconsider 30 after that as well. I've had a request on that, but let's take 10, 11, and 12 now for reconsideration. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are now before us. Does anybody wish to be heard on those? We now have 13 members, so let's go ahead and open the roll on those ordinances, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. And without objection, if we can send seven through nine forthwith, and if we can open the roll on reconsideration of item 30, please, 3-0. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
We'll call that special for Ms. Grule. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 13, and that was being held on the desk for Mr. Reyes.
Okay. Mr. Reyes, we have 15? I think we.
Item 13.
13, okay. Mr. Reyes, we have item number 13 before us now, if you'd like to be recognized on that.
Thank you, Council President. I was hoping we can have the staff to speak to this item. The colleagues, it's been a very complicated process in trying to establish what's best for the riverway. And as such, the department has worked very hard in trying to establish that objectivity, please, this comes to the table, that objectivity and maintain that integrity in the process on what we can do physically to change the river so that we can begin realizing a dream that's been worked on, and now we have a master plan, as you all know. And so we can just speak to how we got here and delineate the process, so that way my colleagues understand that as we move forward, we can each work on our, on our respective areas and think of the partnerships, think of the leveraging opportunities that each one of you has from the trebery to the main riverway, so that as we go forward with these applications, we have the strongest applications possible. And what we see today is a process, and if you can just break that down for me, I appreciate it very much. Please, all my time.
Deborah Weintraub, Bureau of Engineering, Deputy City Engineer. We're here today asking for the council's approval for us to submit three Prop 50 grant applications, and it's a River Parkway grant program. We're here mostly because we have a master plan that has been well-respected, has been vetted widely through the community. We've had several successes of funding. So far, one Prop 50 grant application was approved. We also recently got word that we supported the MRCA in an application for Prop 12, and the state has scheduled a site visit, which is very encouraging.
Congratulations.
So, we're reaching, we're trying to reach out to outside partners. Our internal processes that we have raised, the projects that we think are priority projects to the Internal City Task Force. We've worked closely with the mayor's office for this Prop 50 grant process. We also went in front of the Bond Oversight Committee that the mayor's office runs with the CAO, and we also brought the projects in front of the Ad Hoc Committee of Council. So we're at the final stage. The applications are due this Friday.
The, I know there, and I believe Councilman Alarcon had a strong interest in adding the application, and I just want to especially, council member. And I just want to specify to you, Councilmember, that in this next round, we should try to get to the point where we're all starting at point A and move forward and speak to the implementation element of it. My understanding is the implementation part is one of the deciding factors in our ability to compete at the state level?
Yes. They're looking for projects that can be completed within five years.
Within five years, so...
Yes. And they're looking for land tenureship, that we don't have to go to acquire land.
So land control?
Yes.
Great. So we're going to continue working with you, Councilmember. And I believe we have one coming out of Councilman Labange's district, one in Councilman Gruel, and one in Councilman Zine.
That's right.
So, again, we're going to try to speak to the strength in competition at the statewide level to get the most points possible, to bring as much resources back into the Riverway and the tributaries as we can in the future. Thank you very much for your hard work. I know it's a tough decision and a tough job, but if we can maintain that integrity in how we look at what's real for the Riverway, our credibility will be continued to develop, and implementation will follow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Alarcon.
Just for the purpose of full disclosure, I don't have a problem with this. I think it's great. The only thing is that I, we were encouraged by Bureau of Engineering staff that the project that we had in mind is exactly the kind of project that would be a priority for Prop 50. And so we were trying to see if there was a way to insert this application in now. I have no problem with making that a priority for next year. But I also wanted to share with you that the genesis of the Prop 50 funding comes from state water bonds, of which I helped craft. When I introduced a measure some eight or nine years ago called the Urban River Parks Bill, I was specifically targeting the Pecuauma Tahunga Wash. And so that's why I am constantly focused. And by the way, the language for that bill was incorporated into the bond measures. There were a couple of them that passed on my watch, but that language was incorporated in by Tom Hayden, people like that. So that's why I am passionate about this issue, and I would like to see the department, which is working with us on the vision statement for the CRA, give some consideration to not only the opportunity to make the Tahunga Pecuauma Wash tributary a featured project, but that we have some resources, CRA dollars, that can really bring that to fruition without having to scramble for small grants. We have some money, and so that's really the intent. We're going now with a vision statement for the CRA, and every little piece helps make the puzzle a pure picture. But I really believe that the Pecuauma Wash tributary to the L.A. River is going to be a model for the entire L.A. River Master Plan to, not just in terms of architectural schemes, but in terms of actual implementation. And so I just want to get us there as fast as possible. So I want to thank the department for recommending that we put this on the priority list for next year, and I'm happy with that. That's no problem. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you. And I think the strength of this dialogue is the fact that we get to understand how each one of us is looking at our districts, the strengths we bring to the process, the leveraging value that exists, because each one of us understands what we have in our own districts. And working with the mayor's office, we can establish the scenarios that can give us the best chance. So as we continue to compete in the listing of projects for next year, there's many strengths that Councilman Alarcon brings to the table as we move forward on this application. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith without objection. Seeing then, we will send it forthwith. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 14, and that was called special by Councilmember Alarcon.
Let's hold that on the table for now, if we can go to the next one after that.
Next one then is item number 16. Called special by Councilmember Parks.
Okay. Mr. Parks, and we have two public speaker cards.
We have Pastor Logan come up, and also Faith Calbreth.
Okay. Dr. Lewis Logan, and...
And Faith is the president of SEIU 1877.
Great. Welcome, and good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, President Garcetti, also to the rest of the council, and thank you to Councilwoman Parks for bringing this issue up today. I'm Faith Calbreth. I am the president of SOLA. And we come before you today because real estate industry leader Jamison Properties is currently employing non-union security officers as well as janitors. And as you all know, with your help, we have been able to create a level playing field for security officers with the commercial real estate industry and are currently bargaining our contract. By Jamison insisting on employing non-union contractors, it limits our ability to be able to raise standards, to be able to create better wages, and also be able to provide health insurance and career ladder training for security officers throughout the city, which are predominantly African-American workers. We're calling on the council today to bring to light what Jamison is currently doing, to bring standards down that we have worked so hard with you all to achieve. As you know, they currently house as tenants many of the agencies for the city as well as the county. And I am available to meet with council, each council member at separate times, to discuss what ongoing measures we have in terms of increasing safety in commercial real estate as well as training for these officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Logan.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you, President Garcetti, and thank you to the council body as a whole, and in particular, Councilman Parks, my councilwoman. I want to, again, thank you for your previous support in supporting the security officers' campaign and our ability to raise the standards for security officers who put their lives on the line as their first responders, particularly in areas and in incidences of emergency situations. In particular, we want to just in turn encourage the continual support that you've already expressed in the sense that you have already in the past supported a resolution for Jamison for McGuire Properties in the past, and that helped to breach and bring to closure that particular dispute. This dispute we have now with Jamison Properties, we feel, could be brought to resolution if the city council would go on record with us in supporting closure to this issue and ask and encourage Jamison Properties to no longer do business with contractors like PacWest that will not allow the security officers the right to form a union. We think that forming a union gives the security officers the best chance at developing representation that allows them to raise a standard of living, to enable them to seek a livable wage, to have the ability to bargain for and achieve the right to have the type of health care that will enable them to take care of their families, and also just raises the level of competency and capacity for security officers who need to provide top-notch security services, particularly in a post-9/11 context, a culture, and economy. We think that your support will be helpful, and we look forward to your positive resolution to this matter. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Pastor. And I'd just like to acknowledge the pastor. Many of us are not aware, may not be aware, he's the pastor of Bethel AME. He almost single-handedly, in front of his church, stopped what could have been a very bad incident right after the Devin Brown shooting, happened in the near vicinity of his church. But 500 people showed up on a Monday, I believe, and he, through his efforts, and Minister Tony Muhammad, brought the people into the church, and over the last two years have kept them in a very positive manner to where they now meet regularly about putting their energies into how they can better serve the community. I just want to publicly thank him on this. And also, I'd like to acknowledge Faith Calbreth. Many of us may be aware that she is the new president. This union was just formed. But we've been looking at this issue of security officers for the last couple of years. And one of the things we've seen is initially, it was stalled a little bit dealing with whether security officers and janitors should be in the same union. They've gotten over that hump. She has solidified the union into one productive operation, and we believe that it's important that we send a message that they should be fairly treated. We have heard so much information since 9/11, how the first responders, police and fire, must come into a building and contact a security officer. They expect that security officer to be trained, professional, to tell them exactly what's going on in the building or in the area. And they are seeking to standardize and to professionalize this entire area. We're also going to be working with them in the future and looking at whether Consumer Affairs is the right place for security officers when they license beauty parlors and a variety of other licenses, whether it is more appropriate that they become a part of post, which then sets the legitimate law enforcement standards throughout the state. And so I would ask for an aye vote that we strongly support their efforts to get fair treatment. We have gone on record as a council that health care is a right versus a privilege. We believe that there is a need for the security industry to be looked at as part of law enforcement, and we should be moving forward to make sure that the professionalization of the entire area. And so I'd ask for an aye vote on this motion.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weston is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. The first thing I want to do is rise to commend our colleague Bernard Parks for taking the lead on this issue by introducing this motion that went through the committee that I chair. People, sometimes we take people for granted. And I think where it relates to the security guard industry, we really take these young men and women for granted. We have to realize that the country that we live in today is a heck of a lot different than maybe the country we lived in 25 or 30 years ago, when you could get away with having security officers or security guards that were not properly trained. Security officers whose job was to go from different locations in a building and turn a key just to basically say that they had made their rounds. Times are different now, and we must never, ever forget what occurred on 9/11. I pray, and I'm sure everyone does, that that horrific ordeal never, ever occurs again. But if it does, if it does, it is in our best interest to have a professionalized group of men and women who know how to operate under those conditions. And I say to each and every one of you, I submit to you that that will never occur unless the employers recognize how important the guards are to them. And they have to be properly trained, and they need proper health care. Because you go around today, and security officers are on the job for two months, three months, one year, and you're constantly training new people to take their jobs. And when you're constantly training, and a lot of the training is suspect at best, it's difficult to get the kind of professionalism that we will want and need to not only protect us, but to protect our loved ones. When you think about the high-rise buildings, the very important theaters, and things that we have in this city, our sons, our daughters, our moms, our dads, our uncles, our aunts, and our friends frequent these facilities or work in these facilities. So I think that the council going on record urging one of the largest property owners, in particular on Wilshire Boulevard and in my district, to engage in a true discussion to try to bring this situation to closure, it makes sense to me. So to Pastor Logan, who is one of the young and new energetic leaders in the community and faith, the new El Presidente, we stand with you, we work with you. But let's help give them the tools, and let's ask for Jamison Properties and Dr. Lee to sit down at the table with these fine young men and women and craft something that works for everyone. This can be a win-win for us. And again, Councilmember Parks, you've done good. You've done good on this one. I'm proud of you. When I grow up, I want to be just like you.
One day, one day.
I want to be tall, handsome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weston, and thank you to our speakers today. If there's no other members who would wish to be heard, let's open the roll on this. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much. That has been approved. If we can continue on to the next item, please.
Next item is item number 24, and that was called special by Councilmember Alarcon.
Mr. Alarcon, item number 24.
Members, this is a resolution to call on the presidential candidates to take a position on redefining the federal poverty guidelines. It also is asking, it also asks the federal government to institute an agenda to create new federal poverty guidelines. Members, there was a report by the California Budget Project that just came out yesterday, and that report indicated that for a family of four, depending on the circumstances of their lifestyle, they would have to make between $51,000 on the low end to $74,000 a year in order to live without, and to become what is known as self-sufficient. The current federal poverty guidelines are neither based on regional differences in the economy, nor are they based in any formula that makes any sense. It's simply three times the cost of food for a family of a given size as an average across the nation. Bottom line, poverty is defined as $20,650 in Los Angeles, and in Alabama, and in New Orleans, and in Minnesota, and throughout the nation except in Hawaii and Alaska, where they do get a regional consideration for high cost. If you are making $21,000 a year with a family of four in Los Angeles, the federal government does not recognize you as being poor. Where in the city of Los Angeles can you live on $21,000, on $30,000, on $40,000 with a family of four and not be struggling to survive? Would you have health insurance? Would you be able to pay for childcare? Would you be able to cover the expenses of your kids' schooling? And the fact of the matter is, you can't do that on $20,650. I ask you to support this measure, not because we have the power to change the federal policy, but I also would ask you to consider that we are a donor state to the federal government, giving them, for every dollar, we only get back 78 cents. This might shed some light on federal spending and correct some of that problem. It might also direct the federal government to spend its money properly. If you can't define poverty accurately as a nation, how the heck are you going to spend billions of dollars in targeting poverty problems when you're defining people at only under $21,000 as being poor across the nation? That is incorrect, needs to be changed, and I ask you to send this message. Finally, let me just say, I did meet with four campaigns for the president. I met with Senator Edwards directly. He's agreed to make this part of his agenda. I met with Barack Obama's people. Barack Obama sent a letter saying he would make this part of his agenda. I met with Hillary Clinton's folks yesterday. She will get back to us on that. And finally, Governor Richardson has also mentioned he is considering this as part of his agenda. We need to make this part of the national agenda. It's just incorrect statistics, and it paints a rosy picture where we are in bad shape. And so I urge that we pass this resolution. I sent letters to every presidential candidate. Those are the four that got back to me, by the way. Not surprisingly, but that's just the way it is. So I hope that you will support this, send a strong message. I hope that it is part of the platforms for both parties and also all presidential candidates because we need to shed a full light on what are the true problems that we have with poverty in America. And the current standard doesn't even come close.
Thank you much, Mr. Alarcon, and thank you for your leadership on this issue, both here locally and nationally. Couldn't be more critical for us. And just came up in this morning's housing conference, the Mayoral Housing Summit at UCLA. So thank you very much for that. Colleagues, if we can open the roll, or Madam Clerk, if you open the roll? Colleagues, if we can open the roll, or Madam Clerk, if you'll open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 30, called special by Councilmember Gruel.
All right. Ms. Gruel, item number 30.
Thank you. And Mr. Parks, this is item 30. Do you want to go first, or you? You have one, okay. One question, then. Thank you.
The one thing I just want to bring up in committee, we asked that with all the funds being located, that consideration be given to use those funds as potential matching funds for the safety loop projects before they're used for other things, so that we as a city won't have to come back and look at Prop A, Prop C, or the general fund for those safety loop projects. And that didn't get into the committee report, but certainly want to make sure that those are considered. Otherwise, we'll be scuffling for money as safety loop money comes in, and there's a multitude of projects in the valley. So the issue is, we just want to add that direction in the report, that they be given first consideration for the use of those funds before they become leveraged for other dollars and spent on other projects.
Definitely will work with our funding division to see if that's a possibility and pursue that.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for that. And I think, it's actually a good segue, Mr. Parks, because, and I'll let the department make a presentation, that the idea around some of these dollars on a specific plan, the department had a position of using them for, to leverage and to be able to match some of the potential dollars on the state and federal level. And what we found, when it was determined there was $5 million, that that process, although important, and we should do it, is one of many, in that some of this money had been sitting there that we want to see go forward. And so if you could just real quickly give a brief overview of what changes we're making here, that would be great, Mr. Garcetti, and just to hold my time, and then I'll comment after.
Sean Hairey with the Department of Transportation. Thank you, Councilmember Gruel. As I explained in the committee, our approach had been in the past to leverage the funds to bring in dollars to do street widening or capacity-enhancing projects along Ventura Corridor. And that strategy has been very successful with other specific funds due to the geometrics of the other specific funds and the way they're written. This one is very specific as to how we can spend the money and the 19 intersections that have been identified, and the department is limited to working on those specific intersections. That strategy obviously hasn't worked for us, and you mentioned in your motion that you would like to see how the department plans to spend the money. And our strategy that we are proposing today is, we have identified a bunch of improvements that we could do currently and in a short-term basis, which is a lot of signal upgrades along the corridor, adding left-turn signals, maybe minor street widens at certain intersections to be able to implement a left-turn pocket or a right-turn pocket. We could upgrade our traffic controllers along the corridor, upgrade the signal system where it's lacking, and that would sum up to about $2.3 million of the existing funds. These are funds we can spend today, projects we can implement today, and that we are ready to go. And if the council approves, we would move forward to also modify the language of the specific plan to make it more forgiving and allow the department to be able to look at the other corridors, either the ones crossing Ventura Boulevards such as Van Nuys, Lower Canyon, and see what improvements we can make along those corridors between the boulevard and the 101 freeway, or some of the parallel corridors like Moore Park and Riverside. If we are allowed to look at those and find projects that would directly benefit Ventura Boulevard, it would serve the purpose of improving traffic along Ventura Boulevard, but also gives us a better avenue for going after outside funding. Because again, individual intersections don't score very well in the MTA call for projects. But if we can find more regionally significant or a bigger segment of the corridor, maybe whether it's on Van Nuys or Moore Park, that we could package together in a way that would score better during the MTA call for projects, then it would be a better way of spending the money. Now, to do that, we have to work with the city attorney's office and find the best and easiest way to accomplish this modification of the ordinance. But if we are given the direction, we're willing to and ready to move forward.
Thank you very much for that presentation. And colleagues, in transportation, I said this, I gave the department a little bit of a hard time, that we had to have an article to get this way, to this position, but the department came forward with a very good report that kind of demonstrated to us what changes we needed. And I want to challenge the department to, as you look at other funds and other places, where do we need to make changes to make them really work? And you all are the experts and can tell us where things are wrong. And as was mentioned, there are three areas that we're focusing on, is one is the $2.3 million at the intersections. Just for the public out there, because I did get some emails from people, we did say also that you would be going out to the communities that would be impacted in a good way on this, but impacted, at least we feel in a good way, and talk to them about what it was we were proposing before its implementation, and you would come back within two months to talk about the outreach you had done to homeowners groups and neighborhood councils and so forth. And I believe that was part of the report that we adopted. The second part was amending the specific plan. And those of us that represent, Dennis Zine and myself, and Tom LeBonde and Jack Weiss, know that this specific plan is pretty sacrosanct, and it's been there for a long time, and you don't want to open up Pandora's box. But we do want the kind of flexibility that says some of the traffic that is created is not just at the intersection, those 19 locations that were included in the specific plan, but in fact have impacted other areas. And as it's strictly written right now, we have some limitations. So we look forward to the city attorney coming forward and seeing if we can amend it just for that specific reason.
Absolutely. We're trying to keep it as focused as possible, and also, as you mentioned, if we are given the go-ahead, we would like to invite the community to come and talk to us, and they know best what their neighborhood looks like and where the problems are, and to work with them to develop better projects for the remaining funds, and to be able to develop better projects for future call for projects.
Great. And, you know, a lot of these dollars were specific to surround, again, the areas in which the impact. And so I know I'd be more than happy to work, for example, with Tom LeBonde and Jack Weiss's office to have kind of a general meeting from the 405 to the 101, so you don't have to meet with every, each community in that area, but talk about all this. And similarly, you know, Mr. Zine, probably Mr. Weiss, west of the 405 freeway and those areas. Because I think we'd like to see this money spent as quickly as possible for projects that are going to relieve that traffic congestion in those areas. But I do want to, like I said, take a moment to also compliment the department on what you came forward very quickly to say, let's move ahead and make those changes, and look forward to more of that as well. So I would ask the council today for adoption of this, and look forward to the report backs of community participation, so we can move forward on implementing that $2.3 million.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And thanks for coming back. We had adopted, and then we had to catch him. He was already out of the building. So thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker, to be followed by Mr. Zine and then Mr. LeBonde.
Thank you, Council President. First, I wanted to thank you for your hard work. In your committee report, there's reference to other specific plans in the city. There was a directive to review the trust funds and expenditure rates for other specific plan areas to ensure that the funds are being expended in optimal manner. How many of those exist throughout the city? Do you have a number?
Yes, we have a specific plan for the coastal corridor area. We have a specific plan for the West LA, the Ventura Corridor, of course, and one for Warner Center. Currently, we are working with the Department of City Planning to go out and award a contract to update the Ventura Corridor, I'm sorry, the coastal corridor specific plan, because that's kind of all outdated.
Please hold my time.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And again, those other specific plans, more specifically the west side and the coastal, have been very successful. We have been able to bring in almost $100 million from outside sources using those funds as seed money. And we'll continue to work on developing new projects and updating those plans as we go.
So to put in perspective, we have one in the valley, one in the coastal area, and one where else?
West LA and Warner Center.
And Warner Center.
Right.
And this allows the streets to be improved, landscape maintained, and other types of improvements?
There is a range of improvements we can implement using these funds. The percentage of how much of the funds can be spent on, let's say, streetscape versus street widening or signal systems, it all depends on the specific plan itself. They're not all the same. I don't have all the specifics as to what the other ones are. But yes, these are the fees collected from developers who go in, and they pay the department into the fund, fees based on how many trips they generate. And we collect these funds for these very projects. But the main purpose is not to spend directly out of these funds, because there aren't enough to implement major projects. But these funds are best utilized to be used as a seed money or matching funds or overmatch for call for projects to make it more competitive and implement better projects.
So in your professional opinion, I represent a district where a large transit dependency population exists, where many of the regional lines converge and meet, many of the originating trips for existing transit emanates because they're transit-dependent, and yet I don't have one of these specific plans. So could I look to you to help me assemble and put one in place to address the kinds of pressures that exist in the other parts of the city?
Oh, well, this discussion that I'm about to touch on is in its infancy stages, but we are working with City Planning, Department of City Planning, to maybe convert, or as they develop the new community plans, to make the semi-specific plan type, so that there is a fee structure embedded in those community plans that are being developed in the future, so that we have specific plans like this covering the whole city, not just those areas. So this is a process that we have just started talking about. We are very hopeful that it would be implemented, and that would be a good way of funding future transportation projects.
But let's be honest, the community plans are going to take a long time. They're going to take a long time. Specific plans don't happen overnight, I understand.
Right.
But those of us who have limited lives because of term limits, it would behoove us to move with specific plans unless the community plan in the work program has this in place as a product of that process, correct?
Again, these are community plans that are being developed by the City Planning. This is an ongoing process, but...
I understand. It's a yes or no answer, though.
But I can't answer for City Planning. I can tell you we're working very hard with them to make it happen, but I can't give a timeline for what City Planning can do.
You're dancing now. You're dancing here. You're not answering my question. Again, not to put pressure on you, I understand you guys are working heroically in many of these projects, and you put a lot of time in these efforts. Your partner there, we've been through many committee meetings together, and we've earned our stripes. But it just seems to me that if we're going to deal with one city, and we're going to deal with addressing these needs, it's great to understand and know these tools and all the benefits that are being articulated by my council colleague, Gruel. I think it's just, we need to focus on the nature of how this pressure's building up in these places that don't benefit from these tools. And that's the direction I'd like to take this. So I'd like to proceed with that discussion and perhaps come forth with a motion. Our Transportation Committee Chair will help me get this in place after we assess where in the community plan process this is evolving to determine what's the most efficient vehicle.
And we agree with you, and that's why we have started this discussion, and we are hoping that it's a fast-track process.
Well, this is an eye-opener, so I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Mr. Zine is our next speaker. After that will be Mr. LeBonde.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sure, a couple questions on this fund. How much is in the fund? It talks about using $2.3 million from the Ventura, Coingah Boulevard, Corridor Pacific Plan Trust Fund. How much is in that trust fund?
Currently, the unspent funds are about $6.5 million, although about $1 million is already earmarked for existing development to be used as enhancement fund. But we have about $5.6 million that's not tied to anything, and it's ready for, I mean, it's available for the proposal we have put forward.
I think there was some criticism recently that money was in the fund and not being utilized. Is that correct?
It is correct, and we're not making any excuses. Our strategy wasn't working, and we should have come forward earlier with a new strategy, and we have been given the direction, and we have come forward now. And we are dedicated to making this work and go forward as expeditiously as possible.
And the $2.3 million that has been earmarked for this particular project, it talks about conduct public outreach. How much of the $2.3 million is going to be spent on public outreach versus actual improvement of the traffic?
Actually, it's not, we're not going to spend money for public outreach. We're going to use our own staff to reach out to neighborhood councils and the council offices. We have already started the process. I've contacted the four council offices that are along this corridor. We have had an initial meeting, and we plan to continue working with them, to work with the neighborhood councils, possibly to come up with more important and regional projects along the corridor, to use this money as a seed money to bring in extra funds. So you realize $2.3 million is not a lot of money to do any major meaningful projects. So we want to work with them to develop better projects to be able to compete better during the call for projects or any other funding source that might be available.
And Warner Center, Westfield is doing a major development from Victory Boulevard South, a $700 million improvement, total $1 billion between the completed project and the second phase. How will this impact that? And is there any coordination between what Westfield's doing and their development project, which is just north of Ventura Boulevard, and what's going on with this project?
I believe that's in a different specific plan. There's a Warner Center specific plan, and I think that project will fall within that. This is a very narrow boundary that goes just a little bit above Ventura Boulevard along the whole corridor, and I don't think that project is part of this.
Well, you talk about Woodland Hills and Tarzana. Warner Center is in Woodland Hills. And one of the concerns I have is if the right hand doesn't know what the left hand's doing, and they're in the same area, because Ventura Boulevard connects to Topanga Canyon, which connects with Westfield. And if you're doing one thing and they're doing something else, it may not expedite the movement of traffic as we wish to do. So my concern is that somehow whoever's doing the traffic plan for the Warner Center project gets together with you, at least have a discussion to make sure that there's an understanding if they're going to widen the street or not widen the street or put a left-turn arrow or do something, because your corridor along Ventura in Woodland Hills is definitely going to impact the ingress and egress to Westfield, which is off of Topanga Canyon, which intersects with that Ventura Corridor.
Well, definitely, it discussed internally with a group that's handling the Warner Center specific plan. But again, the boundaries are a little different. They're not overlapping, but we will definitely work with them and make sure that we all know about each other's projects.
Okay, because there is, ingress/egress is going to be off the 101 freeway, off Ventura Boulevard, off of Victory Boulevard. And I just want to make sure that whatever plan we come up with, because the community is very concerned about the traffic impact of this expansion of that shopping center, to make sure whatever dollars we spend, we're doing it in a coordinated fashion. And not that you're doing one thing over here, and they're doing one thing over here, and there's no bridge of communication. We need to make sure that's done.
Absolutely. We always work together when we develop projects for the call or any other funding cycle, so that goes without saying.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. LeBonde.
Thank you very much, and how are you today?
Good.
Good. The issue of Ventura Boulevard, which is interesting, members. Mr. Weston and I share Wilshire Boulevard, and it has big streets on either side of it that act as a offshoot in case there's congestion or other things. Ventura has no parallel street other than Moore Park, which becomes a diagonal and very many blocks away, so our challenges are great there. I just want to ask you to focus in conjunction with the Highway 101. Anything you do to improve the 101, and talk about improving the 101 improves Ventura Boulevard, from the Coingah Pass, from the Barham Bridge, all the way through. There's a massive project proposed by NBC Universal, which I have some great concerns about, that I want to see mitigation and improvement before the project can move forward to, because it's already congested. We built a brand-new bridge there at Ventura, right as you enter Studio City, and on the northbound lanes, you go from...
northbound lanes, you go from Vibe on the Hollywood freeway down to Four, it's a pinch point. Removing pinch points are key, but also, as it relates to Ventura, you've got to have a thought about the 101 freeway. Any ideas?
Absolutely, and we agree with you. My staff and I also work on that NBC Universal project, and although the boundaries of this specific plan does not overlap with Ventura freeway, but we are working diligently with the developer to make sure that we come up with proposals for the 101 freeway improvements to alleviate, so we also share your concern that there is a lot of traffic that's being generated, and we want to make sure that all impacts are mitigated to the extent possible.
And this goes is north all the way to Barham, correct? The boundary of this?
Boundary of this is just south of the 101 freeway.
To south of 101 freeway at Barham, though, it's Coingah West?
The other end is the Coingah West, yes, and the north end is...
Through the Coingah Pass. You know, it's very important, even if nothing happens at NBC Universal, there's a traffic problem in that region, and we've got to address it, and this is a small part of the giant equation.
And we agree with you, and that's why we are here with a new proposal to be able to do more than what this specific plan allows us to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labach. The last speaker on the queue. But with that, let's go ahead and open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item 33, and that was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, we have item 33 before us now. Portrero Canyon Trust Fund?
Can we just hold that a minute? We're going to see if we can't get that either continued or into committee, and then we'll talk to CD 11.
All right, we'll hold that on the desk. Next item, please.
Item 34, and that was called special for cards from the public.
Matt Dowd on item 34.
Yes, thank you. This is an ordinance I can agree with, be in favor of. We're going to establish a salary for a payroll analyst, and I'm interested in this because I'm thinking the first place he should be looking at the payroll is the city attorney's office, and I see the salary they're talking about here for this person is $70,000. So all you've got to do is fire one attorney, and you'll probably get all of that back in one go. I seen one just walk through here a minute ago, Mark Brown, he's probably on the line for the chop. He's responsible for all those lawsuits at Venice Beach. So I think the city attorney's office, Mr. Payroll Analyst, let's go and check through, there's like 500 attorneys at least over here, and what they're doing is they're creating problems that are going to cost the city a lot of money.
That closes our general public comment for that item. Any members wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on 34. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved, and if, as an ordinance, that will be approved with 12 members here. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item 37, and that was called special for cards from the public.
Okay, item 37, Mr. Dowd.
Yes, thank you. Channel 35, it's good to be back again. Let me mention this one about the salary for the interim general manager of the Department of Transportation, since the mayor just fired the previous general manager. So I'm looking at this, you know, it looks a little shady, anything the mayor's got his hands on right now, and I don't mean that to be a pun, but we, you know, we already see, where's he getting his legal advice? You know, he's taken, you know, it's indiscretions, really, that, you know, sacking people so he can push through his transportation agenda because he wants to develop, you know, all these properties, and the Department of Transportation's probably against a lot of these things, so he wants to put his own person in there.
Any members who wish to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President, just for council's information, the salary is $208,612.08.
Okay. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next one is item 38, and that was called special for cards from the public.
Thank you, and we have Speaker out of Van Nuys, Miriam Fogler, and my apologies, yesterday I did not know the item was going to be continued, and we didn't get a chance to hear from you on the previous item, but we have item 38 before us.
Yeah, well, I'm very upset about that, what you did to me yesterday, and that wasn't right, and I should have been, had a right to speak on that, just like the people in the round, the horseshoe. So don't let that happen again on your watch, Garcetti, please.
Thanks, Ms. Fogler. I'll do my best.
Okay. The, we're here to work together. No, I mean, I'm trying to, you know, to, you know, we've got to work together. We're here, people are here together, we're all living on the same planet, and I don't want to have the same thing happen in the past times when people between, you know, our leaders and the peasants. So anyway, what I'm talking about now, I just heard this last manager getting 208, what's the salary for this one now, the sanitation manager?
We'll be announcing that. Madam Clerk, why don't you go ahead and announce the salary right now?
Well, I want to speak on it.
What is that amount?
It's $180,508.
Okay. There we go.
There'd be a cap on the salaries as well, because after all, you're tied into superior judges. I mean, it should be, there should be a cap, just like, you know, if the city's in a plus, you get a plus. If it's in the minus, you show, you get a minus, but I mean, the workers, city workers are making the lowest amount of pay, and I am really happy with the sanitation department, they're doing a lot of good there, so I have really no complaints about it. The problem I'm having is that there's a building that they, now, one of the things at the Hyperion, there's a building that's set to be condemned or to be closed down, it's going to be bad for some of the mechanics there, and they need that building, they need another building closer to where they can, at their work site, and I already let the 501 union know, and this is not right, that they're doing this to them because they have to sit now at the area where the operators are, and that's going to be a little convenience because he has to drive an extra more mile time to get to the work site. So I would appreciate if the sanitation manager can work this out at Hyperion, I really appreciate it very much. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fogler. That closes our general public comment on this item. We can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item 39, and that was called special for cards from the public.
Okay. Item 39, Mr. Dowd, I'd like to come forward.
Yes, thank you, Ralph M. Brown, the Brown Act, for the right to comment on this Been coming to City Hall for 18 months, I've seen a lot of these rewards offered, and I've never, I don't believe I ever seen one where they actually, they're giving up the reward, because wow, look at the, look at all the transfers of money, it's got to go through like five accounts before the police department can make the reward. But that's not the point, the point is, we got one, we're paying the reward, someone's been obviously convicted for a murder, so that's a good thing, and I'm a little concerned about, you know, all the red tape to get the reward paid out, but obviously, that's something we can get the CIO to look at instead of the fee waivers.
That closes our public comment on that item. Any members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
And the reward payment will move forward. Next item, please.
Next item is item 40, and that was called special for cards from the public.
Okay, Miriam Fogler and Van Nuys on item 40, and then Mr. Dowd here after that.
Why can't there be an understanding between us human beings? We need to work together, this is ridiculous to see these special events fees being put on the agenda. Why can't we bridge a gap here between the elected officials here and the people who are just, you know, working eight to five? There needs to be something done about this, to stop this spending, when you come to them and asking them for the 26 and 27, not 1, 27 November, 26 in February, and you're getting these fee waivers, this adds up, folks, and, you know, people who are living on a, who are middle-class people can't make the ends meet. I mean, even if you give them a 2.5% or 5% raise, how can you justify having these fee waivers? This is outrageous, what you're doing here. You know, if you're saying you have an emergency, then why are you having these special events? This is, this is not, this is kind of hypocrisy right here, and that you need to show accountability and have it audited, you need the city to be audited for all this stuff that you're spending, all these different perks, and pork rules we call in Washington. It's a waste of money. I don't know why you're doing this, the one, if you have your own money, you know how to spend it, obviously, you don't want to lose grasp of your money, but when it's somebody else's money, obviously, you don't want to take responsibility for it as much. I don't know why, this is human nature. I like to have it, you know, stopped, because we got monsters out there that want us dead, and we need to have all, we need our services here, and I don't want to be threatened, I don't want our unions being threatened. They're middle-class people, the city workers, they, they're not making $100,000 a year, they're making up to maybe 90, and they're making less than what the engineers and electricians, and my husband can't even keep the electrician and engineers after they hit his plant because they're not paid enough compared to DWP, and you're still giving these fee waivers.
Matt Dowd is our next speaker here in council chambers.
Okay, here's what I want to see happen with the fee waivers. I disagree with Miriam Fogler, they're an essential part of the city, you know, the point being here is let's look at each one individually and judge it on its merits, and what we might have to do is, you know, stop some of these ones, we already got them reimbursing the commercial events, that's the Jack Weiss 2001 memo, but what we need to do now is start looking at some of these ones that really aren't of public interest, they're too specific, and it looks like it's a little discriminatory. See, here's a good one, number eight, letter H, the disaster preparedness and public safety fair. I mean, that's essential and crucial, and I will never stand by and let that be taken away from the public purse, because that's critical. However, there's some here, like the Korean Community Health, you know, we might have to stop some of these ones, they're a little too specific, because I don't think that's fair for the public.
Thank you. That closes the public comment on that item. Anybody wishing to be heard from the council? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right, that is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item 41, and that was called special for cards from the public.
I think the city attorney has informed us, we reached six-minute limit for the speaker there, so we will put that card in the record. Anybody wishing to be heard from council? Seeing none, let's go ahead, open the roll on 41, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 14 is still on the desk, as well as item 33.
Okay, Mr. Parks, is 33...
Well, 33, what we'd ask, that go to Budget and Finance Committee, and we'll hear it on Monday, and if we can get a placeholder back in council on Wednesday.
All right. Without objection, colleagues? Well, we will work to do the placeholder in Mr. Parks' office, that'll be sent back to Budget and Finance in the meantime. And that takes us back to item 14, and Mr. Alarcon.
Yes, members, this item is related to the council granting authority to the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment and Neighborhood Councils to accept gifts. Seems like a relatively small request of the Neighborhood Council system, but it's been years in the committee, and so I think it is time for us to move forward on this item. The ordinance that we are recommending would require donors to complete a donor disclosure form when donations exceed 500 over one year, one calendar year period. I should explain, the city attorney had recommended $100, but that could be, that could be a lot of donuts. If the same person gives donuts every, at every meeting, they could end up having to fill out one of these donor statements after time, and that might be a little onerous. The Ethics Commission recommended a $1,000 trigger, that might be a little high, I think 500 is a reasonable approach, and the Ethics Commission does think that's fine. Setting aside, the second provision would set aside 10% of all gifts to Neighborhood Council to be deposited in a trust fund and utilized for Neighborhood Councils in economically disadvantaged areas as determined by DUN. This is an idea to promote or to recognize, that some Neighborhood Council areas are just not going to be able to compete with other areas in terms of raising money, and it would provide that, basically, a tithe of 10% or a set aside of 10% to those Neighborhood Councils, hopefully, that do very well in raising money, and then DUN would provide a grants program that any Neighborhood Council could apply to, and, but DUN would set up the standards for receiving a grant and would provide that money later on. Finally, the fourth recommendation would prohibit donations from individuals or entities with pending matters before the city. This is a measure that was promoted by Councilmember Han, and I have no problem with it, but it must be recognized that this is a standard that is higher than the council's standard, the difference being that we have to file economic interest statements, and we think we might need this additional protection to ensure that the Neighborhood Council are not enticed by people that have matters before the city to do something that might get them into trouble. So we would prohibit donations from individuals or entities with pending matters before the city council. Before I move this forward, we would like to ask the Ethics Commission to come forward, because there were two questions that we asked them to respond to at the council. The first is whether or not it's a good idea to increase from 100 to 500 the cumulative value of gifts for which the donor disclosure form would be required, and the second is prohibiting gifts from donors who are seeking, intend to seek, or in the past six months have sought a contract license permit or a project with the city. With that, I would ask the Ethics Commission to respond to those two questions.
Heather Holt with the City Ethics Commission, the Director of Policy and Legislation. The commission did consider this item on two separate occasions. At the first consideration, it did make two recommendations with regard to the ordinance. One was to expand the application of the donor disclosure form so that it was a citywide requirement rather than applied just to Neighborhood Councils and DUN. The second recommendation was, as you mentioned, to expand the content of the donor disclosure form so that it was not limited to just real estate projects and permits that were pending before the city. At the second commission meeting, the commission addressed two questions that were posed directly to it by the committee. One was with regard to raising the threshold for the donor disclosure form to $500. The committee, the commission supports that recommendation. The commission does not support the second proposal, which would be to prohibit gifts from certain types of donors, again, for the reason that you mentioned, which is that it puts the advisory Neighborhood Councils in a more restrictive position than any other city agency.
You have six minutes, Sabina.
Members, I just wanted to make clear, the Ethics Commission has no problem with the limit of $500?
That's correct.
The trigger of $500?
That's correct.
Okay. Members, this matter was brought to us from, we essentially were asking for a committee of the whole advice on the, on these final two questions. Since the Ethics Commission does not have a problem with the $500 provision, I would incorporate that into our recommendations, but we would seek your advice relative to prohibiting gifts from donors who are seeking, intend to seek, or in the past six months have sought a contract license permit or project with the city. I would turn to Member Han to ask, since that was your recommendation in response to the Ethics Commission, perhaps you can give us some guidance.
Point of peroration, members, I actually think my concern was if they had an item pending in the Neighborhood Council jurisdiction, not really in front of the whole city, I think it does make it a little more problematic to think that if you have any item pending before the city, that you can't make a donation to any Neighborhood Council. So mine was a little more specific, if the Neighborhood Council was going to be voting on an issue, then that, whoever was proposing that in that Neighborhood Council jurisdiction, I felt maybe we should be a little careful on the donations. Maybe my recommendation is we go with the first two that we don't have objection to, and then maybe, Richard, we take up the third one in our discussions about the 9/12 recommendation. I mean, I mean, take the first three, and then the fourth one, we take up and maybe have a few more hearings on as we talk about the 9/12 recommendations. What do you think?
Okay, that's fine with the chair of the committee, therefore... Okay, that's fine with the chair of the committee. Therefore, I would move that we accept the report of the committee, but amend the report to, to eliminate item number four, prohibiting donations from individuals or entities with pending matters before the city. So we would just be recommending the, the first three items.
Excuse me, Mr. Alarcon, did you want to send that recommendation four back to your committee for consideration, or just delete it totally?
We would, yes. We could send recommendation four back to committee for further consideration. Oh, by the way, I would also move that this would be, this would have a three-year sunset clause provision, so we could come back and review this program as it moves forward.
Okay.
Good.
That would be my motion.
Okay. Ms. Han is our next speaker, and then Mr. Parks.
Actually, I just spoke. I pressed my button to clarify.
Did the clarification?
Really was my idea.
Mr. Parks.
I just wanted to ask one question. Does this, or what's being recommended, does that somewhat conflict on the ordinance that says that if you get ten thousand or more, it has to be accepted by the city, or is this something short of that?
You're referring to the recommended prohibition on certain gifts from certain donors?
Yes, yes.
I believe, my understanding is the ordinance would need to be amended, so that everything else would still fall under the ten thousand dollar.
Okay, so the thing is, is that this would fit, I think some gifts are five thousand and then some are ten, so this would fit under those two limits. We're not altering those dollar amounts.
That's correct. The prohibition would apply regardless of amount.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
She answered properly. The CLA might have a different approach. City Attorney.
Yes, Deputy City Attorney Darren Martinez. The current process, if a neighborhood council wishes to have a gift accepted, is that they have to come forward to city council, and city council will adopt a resolution that approves or rejects that gift. This ordinance delegates some of that authority to the departments and the neighborhood councils to be able to accept gifts on their own behalf. There are some limits and parameters imposed in this ordinance, so for example, the neighborhood councils and the department is only able to accept gifts up to a certain monetary limit. That's ten thousand dollars. If the monetary amount exceeds the ten thousand dollars, then it comes forward to city council for consideration. There's also...
It's a charter provision?
Yep.
That's a charter provision?
This is a provision that's, that's drafted in the ordinance. The amount, that's up to, we've, we've drafted the amount just consistent with other types of regulations that are out there. We looked at other types of agencies that are authorized to accept gifts, and we selected the ten thousand amount just basically based on what that, or other agencies receive.
What I was just asking is that with that ordinance in place, I was just trying to get a sense of, on the neighborhood council, if they complied with it, is it that we're trying to limit them to a lesser number? Because if we have an ordinance that says in some departments are five thousand, some are ten thousand, if the current ordinance is in place, I was just trying to figure out, what are we just trying to limit neighborhood councils to a lower amount? Because it appears it's already covered by the gift ordinances in place, if I understand.
No, they're, they're not covered by the current gift ordinance that exists. In order for a department or entity to be able to have that authority, we have to have an ordinance in place. Currently, the department nor the neighborhood councils have any ability. They haven't been authorized by ordinance to accept gifts, so this proposed ordinance is what would give them that ability or authority. They can't accept it under any current ordinances that are out there.
Then the message you're asking is, I thought when the ordinance had said the five and ten thousand, that, that was an ordinance about general acceptance of gifts that would cover anyone in the city. Are you saying it's limited? Because I don't recall any specific departments being highlighted in that ordinance to say each one was given authority.
I wanted to clarify. Gwen Poindexter, City Attorney. There's no citywide gift ordinance currently in the city of L.A., so basically, different departments and different commissions have separate authority under the charter or the ordinance, depending, depending what
So they're, they're department-specific?
Department-specific. So those limitations range from department to department. So for this department, neighborhood councils, the Dunne recommended a certain.
Misimpression, because we thought that there was a couple of departments that it was raised to ten thousand specifically, and that the general ordinance was five thousand for everyone else. So if you're telling, because I don't recall on the five thousand dollar ordinance that there were departments listed. I know we specifically raised for the police department, and I believe one other department, that they could go as high as ten. So that's what I'm wondering about, is that if those ordinances are in place, that it seems as though they would fit under that, because there's, there is a general ordinance for five thousand dollars.
There is no, again, one general ordinance. They're all separate ordinances, and you're correct, the range is generally five thousand or ten thousand. So the Dunne recommended a range that was compatible with the levels that existed currently in the city. But those can be changed per ordinance. This is just what Dunne recommended.
Ms. Gruel, and then Mr. Alarcon.
And I'm fine with how you drafted it with the questions, but more interested in the comments that were just discussed about a city, there is no citywide policy, which seems like something we need to, to look at. So, and, and maybe this is a report back. I can introduce a separate motion. However, we want to do that, which is best, but I think that it would behoove us to have a citywide policy on gifts. So I don't know if you want to answer that question now, or, again, we can use it as part of the instruction here. I can introduce a separate motion that would ask you to report back on the gifting policy in the city of Los Angeles, and to come back with a citywide ordinance specific to all of us, irrespective of the one before us.
This issue has been, Deputy City Attorney Renee Stottle, this issue has been discussed years earlier, and there had been a draft city ordinance, citywide gift ordinance, which was submitted to council but never acted upon, and that has been one of the continual recommendations of the Ethics Commission.
Okay, so why don't you give me a copy of that, and we will, if, if you don't succeed, you try, try it again. So it seems like the time has come to do that. So I will, I will just ask for that, and we'll see where it is in the process, and if I need to introduce a separate motion on that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Just to close, let me clarify that the committee did contemplate this issue, but we do feel that the situation of the neighborhood councils is, is unique, and, and that we are in a position to move forward with that. These are literally hundreds of people who have the ability to raise money that might help them do the projects that they're working on. A little bit different than some of the issues that we have departmentally, where people actually work for the city, as opposed to being advisors to the city. I think that this is an appropriate, I, I would support a further consideration of a gift ordinance, a broader gift ordinance that affected all departments, as long as it doesn't come back to Education and Neighborhood Council Committee. But I, I also believe that it's time to, to free up the neighborhood councils so that, that we can really see what they can do in terms of generating support from other community participants and help them get their projects completed. So with that, I would urge your support for the three provisions as stated before, as well as the sunset clause.
Mr. Labange.
After the vote, I want an introduction.
Okay, we'll take the vote first, then. All right, with that, we have the recommendation four would be sent back to committees, is that right, Madam Clerk? And the others would, we move forward with that? Was that the motion? Clarify?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, we have that before us. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. That's what will happen. And Mr. Labange for an introduction.
Thank you very much, members. I would like you to see right there, these are all brand-new employees of the city of Los Angeles. The Los Angeles Police Department nine-one-one system, they're on a tour with their supervisor, their very fine supervisor, Rosa Mendoza. Give them all a big hand. Welcome to city service, and hopefully, we never have to call you, but thank you for helping the public of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, and welcome aboard. With that, next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused Tuesday, December fourth, leave at eleven-thirty for city business. That meets council policy.
He's excused.
And that clears the desk.
And colleagues, if I can ask folks to sit tight for adjourning motions. We lost quorum yesterday on adjourning motions, so folks could, could stay here for that. We have a number of adjourning motions from yesterday that we'd like to submit into the record, and I know folks have done that. Before that, are there any announcements of a business nature before? If not, if I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our adjourning motions today. If I can ask all members to rise, please. Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Sine. Okay, I'd like to recognize first Ms. Han for adjourning motion.
I'd like us to adjourn today in memory of Jan Cooper, who was a retired L.A. school teacher that was currently trying to open a gelato shop in downtown San Pedro. He died Saturday of a heart attack at the age of sixty-four. He was a lifelong Angelino. He'd lived in San Pedro for seventeen years, and he just recently began working to open an ice cream and gelato shop in downtown San Pedro, something that we've all wanted for a long time. He's spent more than two years getting permits, health department approvals, business licenses, and he was weeks away from opening when he passed away. His wife said he dedicated his life to ice cream. He was so excited to open that ice cream shop for the people of San Pedro and build a future for our children. His family has vowed to open the shop in his memory, and I'm sending the word out to all those in the city family, whatever we can do to expedite the opening of that shop. Let's do it. He's survived by his wife, Wanty, his parents, Harry and Barbara, and his seven children, Harrison, Dylan, Robin, Morgan, Chinta, Spring, and Kim. Funeral services are scheduled for Thursday at Mount Sinai in Hollywood Hills. A reception will be held at the Cabrio Beach House at four o'clock. It's very sad. We will miss him, but hopefully, his legacy will live on.
Thank you. May he rest in peace. Mr. Labange.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, I'd like us all to adjourn in memory of Kathleen C. O'Brien. Lived a very good, long life into her high eighties. She once walked in these chambers as the Irish Woman of the Year, very involved in the Irish community in Los Angeles. She had a wonderful husband who was a doctor at Glendale Adventist Hospital. Tragically, he was involved in a pedestrian accident, and he preceded her in her death some years ago. But she was a great friend to many in the Irish community. Ask for adjourning, Kathleen C. O'Brien, wonderful woman.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, we adjourn in memory of Mohamed Nassadine, one of our community activists dealing with business. Just want to advise the community that the viewing will be held at Angela's Funeral Home on Thursday from three P.M. to nine P.M., and the funeral will be at the Crenshaw Christian Center, eleven A.M. on Friday, October nineteenth. Also would like to adjourn in memory of Ron Prescott. He was here recently in council as a member of the President's Commission on Education. He passed away at his home in Baldwin Hills on October the twelfth as a result of cancer. He was born in Texas, moved to Los Angeles when he was four. He's a graduate of Darcy High School, and later Cal State L.A. He had his first teaching job with L.A. Unified in nineteen sixty-one at Murchison High, Murchison Elementary School. He was the, a teacher that in nineteen sixty, that actually was paired, the first class that paired white and minority students in the district. He also founded the Office of Multicultural Education in nineteen seventy-one, and later became the deputy superintendent, number-two job in the L.A. Unified, where he spent a great deal of his time in lobbying for legislation. He was successfully pushed for money throughout the federal and state government for schools. A public memorial is pending. He's survived by his mother, Lee Prescott.
Thank you to all members.
He was one of the great administrators in L.A. Unified, and I, I think I just ran into him in the last few months in downtown, and always very positive, really the type of people who built the, the school system that, I know when Richard and I went to L.A. Unified, that type of pride that was there.
Mr. Race, oh, sorry, Mr. Parks, do you have another one?
Yeah, one more. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Dan Nathaniel Sanders, Jr., who is the father of Ms. Sheila Sanders, who's the principal of Crenshaw High School. He died after an extended illness. He's a longstanding member of the Wilmington area, attended the New Hope Baptist Church, and also he attended Banning High School, graduated nineteen fifty-five. His services have passed, but just wanted to honor him because of the relationship with a principal at Crenshaw. He leaves his wife and several other family members.
Thank you. Mr. Race.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of the Los Angeles Housing Department Director of Code Enforcement, Domingo Salceda's mother, Uloja T. Salceda, passed away on Sunday, September twenty-third, two thousand seven, with family members at her side. She was ninety-nine years old, resided in Donna, Texas with her husband, Santos Salceda, who recently celebrated his one-hundredth birthday. Ms. Salceda is survived by her husband of over seventy years, had ten children, was blessed with many grandchildren, one of which, Andrew Salceda, works for the Los Angeles Fire Department. During the nineteen fifty's and sixty's, the family supported themselves as migrant farmworkers throughout the Midwest, and she lived to see the successes of her children and grandchildren. Loving mother who held very close ties with her family, community, and the Donna Apostolic Church. Her memory will be kept alive through her large and loving family. Services were held on September twenty-seventh in Donna, Texas. And I know Domingo is one of those employees who does many hours and works hard to keep our community safe as an inspector. The second motion is the Los Angeles Housing Senior Inspector, Ron Cunningham, and his wife Cheryl's third son, Ryan Cunningham, twenty-three years old, died last Saturday, October sixth, in a tragic car accident. Ryan was employed by a company in Cucamonga. He's survived by Ronnie Cunningham III, Anton Cunningham, Callan Cunningham. He played sports, enjoyed restoring cars as a hobby. His goal was to enter school to become an automatic auto mechanic. He will be missed by his family and large network of friends. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Ryan Cunningham.
Thank you. Are there any other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? It will next be in session, colleagues, on Friday, the nineteenth of October. That will be here in the John Farrow Council Chambers in City Hall. We will see you on Friday. Have a great day.